Can we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this day and this opportunity to come together and meet and try to resolve some of the problems that we've had, some issues that we deal with. Please protect those that follow us constantly and protect us on a daily basis, our first responders and our armed services. Let us follow your will, in Christ's name, amen.
All right, as I say in every meeting, the rules of decorum are in effect. All right, first up is going to be a proclamation. Cindy, are you here? Oh, there you are, okay. If you'll come up front, counsel, if you'll join me. Yes ma'am, thank you. All right, the next thing is a presentation 5.1 by Tyler Smith on a proposed business concept. Tyler, if you guys want to come up? Make sure you push the button, because, yeah, there we go.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and we promise not to take up too much of your time. Our names are Tyler and Laura Smith. We currently own a business called Mom Margaritas located in downtown Fayette at the Fayette Food Hall. Our business concept is modeled after daiquiri to go shop similar to what many people seen in places like New Orleans, Houston, and San Antonio. We however have created our own spin on it by putting a big focus on specialty margaritas as well as kid-friendly options of slushes and shaved ice. Our goal was to create a place where everyone feels welcome with a variety of choices for the whole family. We have seen much success in the past year on this business venture. We have created a presence on social media and a positive reputation for our great drinks, family-friendly menu, and exceptional customer service. We have helped facilitate events in downtown Fayette, donated to the community around us, won several awards with the Rockwall Herald banner best of competition, and helped win awards for the city of Fayette for our contributions to the food hall we are currently a part of. We come to you tonight in hopes to one day bring a second Mom Margaritas location to McLendon-Chisholm. We currently hold a BG license through TABC for our location in Fayette, which means beer and wine sales on and off premise. Because of local election laws here in McLendon-Chisholm, we would need to obtain a VQ license, which is beer and wine sales off premise. Because of not having the option for onsite consumption, we are presenting the idea of doing a drive-through concept, as you can see in our rendering that was sent. All sales would be completely to-go. Our cups are sealed and safely packaged according to TABC standards. In addition to our already diverse menu of daiquiris, margaritas, slushes, shaved ice, we would also love to add a few coffee options and breakfast pastries and breakfast sandwiches to the menu as well, if we were able to come to your city. We believe that with all the traffic that comes through State Highway 205, we would have a very successful business that would in turn result in sales tax revenue for your city. If you have any questions, we would love to answer them. We thank you for your time and hope that we can be a part of your great city one day. We will also be at your community egg drop event this Saturday selling non-alcoholic slushes, so feel free to stop by our tent. Thank you.
Thank you guys, and we will look into discussing that a little further than I had.
Thank you.
All right, before we start citizens' comments, guys, I want to say something before we start that, and it has nothing to do with the comments. For those of you, most of you may not be aware, but when it comes to being in the military or being a first responder, no matter what position you may have, those jobs will put a strain on those individuals, like there's no tomorrow. In the last two weeks, two guys that I looked up to and learned things from in law enforcement, both lost their lives. And on top of that, guys that I look up to in the military, we've had a couple lose their lives. And I just ask that everybody, you know, keep our first responders and our veterans in your prayers, because we're losing way too many of them, either from health issues or from suicide, and it's getting to a point that it's, to me, it's an epidemic. If you lose, you lose one, that's one too many. So, I just want to bring that up to everybody's attention, that, you know, say a prayer for these guys, because they see a lot of trauma that the rest of us in the general public that have never served in those capacities probably will never see, or may only see one or two in their lifetime. And those guys see it a lot more, so. That's all I have to say on that, and we'll start the citizens' comments. I hope I don't butcher your name. Is it Tauss, Mr. John Tauss? Tauss, okay. You're up first. You'll just, make sure you turn the mic on and state your name and your address. It's not on yet, because the little red light comes on around it. There you go. Perfect.
Is that working? There we go.
It's working now.
Okay. Good evening. My name is John Tauss, 216 Devonport Drive, Rockwall, Texas. First, I want to start out and say that I'm not opposed to growth and development. In fact, I'm a huge proponent of the promises that Mr. Short made running for mayor, and that is that we will make sure future growth is supported by the infrastructure required to maintain our high-quality and low-density rural environment that benefits all citizens. I'm now trying to figure out, when did things change? The Trilogy community doesn't meet any of these definitions, and anyone that travels the 205 or Ridge, they're backed up three to five lights, they know there is an infrastructure to support it. There's not the schools to support it, there's not the water to support it. So, we don't seem to have that infrastructure in place. So let me back up now for a moment and just let you know what my job is. I'm an investment advisory representative and a portfolio manager. I tell you this because my licensing as an IAR requires me to put my clients' interests ahead of my own. We are different from, an often misused term of a financial advisor, that's a registered rep and is not required to have a fiduciary relationship. Our relationship is binding, like an attorney-client. That relationship allows us to be fined, sued, lose our licenses, the same as an attorney, if we do not put those interests of our clients first. We're not in the business just to sell something for a commission. And my wish is that everyone on this council, the city manager or administrator, the mayor was required to have the same relationship with its citizens. Instead, it's only implied by your word that you are putting the best interests of us citizens and the community before yourselves. Unfortunately, I'm seeing, along with others, that this isn't happening. In the case of Trilogy, something has gone radically wrong. Again, there isn't the infrastructure to support this development, and five houses on an acre, this isn't low-density, and therefore I can't believe that we can say it's high-quality. So none of these qualifications apply. Now, it also makes me uncomfortable to have to say, there are significant concerns that have transpired over the last eight to nine months. Since then, Mr. Hildebrandt has been hired, and again, I'm an investment advisor. I'm not a private detective, and with a little search on Google, I'm very concerned about how Mr. Hildebrandt was appointed or hired. My internal red flag sensors went off a couple weeks ago, when he seemed to be selling the Trinity development to the city council and to us citizens. This is not normal for this position. A city manager or administrator is a trusted administrator that should be good with the cities, good with managing the city's finances, like I am with my clients. He should have high integrity, be ethical, and not a salesman. So I'm wondering what the city council found with their background check of Mr. Hildebrandt, and what did you know about it before hiring him? Because in a short amount of time, I found that he was removed from two prior cities. First, in 2012, he was accused of misappropriating $371,726 and was asked to leave because it was a relationship with the mayor that was involved in a $2 million fraud scheme. I have records of all this. Articles, you guys can find yourself. Eric Richardson was quite a mayor, as he decided to set up a Ponzi scheme to fraud the city and its citizens, excuse me, to fraud the Ponzi scheme, those citizens that were in his community, of $557,000 that he used on personal expenses with him and another one of his cohorts. Now, of course, when it was written about this, the mayor and the city manager, Mr. Hildebrandt, denied it, as usual, most criminals do. However, after a year or so, we can see that... That's five minutes, right? Can I have a...
You can finish, you can talk during...
Perfect, I'll finish up.
Bridgette Jo, I run the meeting, let me... If you need to finish, you can do that during public hearing.
Okay, so I'll go through the submissions that I have at that point to back this up. I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Oh, okay. Is that good? With that being said, if you're, I know you filled a sheet out, guys, if it's about the public hearing and you want to wait and speak during the public hearing and not feel like you got to speak during citizens' comments and public hearing, just let me know when I copy. Misty Ventura? Okay. Mr. Black? David Black? Okay. Some of you guys have doctors' handouts. Is it Mr. Saunders?
Good evening. You here all right? Justin Saunders, 116 Brentwood Drive, Heath, Texas. The saying goes, intent is nine-tenths of the law. The council and the Huffines full well know the intent of this community. It's spelled out in the comprehensive plan. The product you're planning flies in the face of that intent and disrespects existing stakeholders and the spirit of this community. You know this, but you proceed for one reason, economic gain, and it's painful to see native Texans endanger the intended theme of this wonderful rural community. Stop and rethink. Adjust your plan. Create a beautiful Texas legacy, not just a profit.
All right, Kyle, I'm not even going to attempt to butcher your last name. How do you say your last name? What is it? Okay, you're up next.
I'll be quick. Kajudiski, 1438 Pullen Road. My property butts up to the north end of the Trilogy, probably my T-Boys neighbor. I've been to, I think, three different meetings in this room that were about the new restaurant down here with the drive-through window.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It was discussed at length at all three meetings, in good communication back and forth on whether to allow a drive-through window and issues that it would cause with traffic and congestion at that intersection and wherever else. Which pales in comparison to the issues that this development is going to cause, right? I guess my point is that really, in all three of those meetings, well, especially in the last meeting, the planning and zoning meeting, there was good communication back and forth. There was a true discussion about positives, negatives, issues, you know, and how they possibly could, it could be resolved. I guess my point is, what I'm asking is for today, because I've been now, I think, six meetings on this Trilogy development, and there's been zero communication back and forth. When we get to that point on the agenda, can we please have that communication? I know it's been requested several times, and again, at the planning and zoning meeting last Tuesday, that's exactly what it was, and it was fruitful and productive, so if we can, you know, I guess I'm pleading that we can have that kind of discussion today when we get to that point in the topic. Thank you.
Bridgette Jo, 256 Stevens Road, Rockwall, Texas. After watching Mr. Holla stand next to Trilogy's attorneys last week in court and argue against the city having to follow its own comprehensive plan, I decided to do some more research on this city attorney that seems to be directly aligned against the wants of the citizens of McLendon-Chisholm that employ him via their taxpayer dollars. To start, I found that on September 6th of 2021, Mr. Holla was publicly reprimanded by the Texas State Bar for misconduct that included promising to share legal fees with a non-lawyer and assisting a person in the unauthorized practice of law. Since I'm not in the legal profession, I was unsure if being publicly reprimanded is a normal occurrence. You know, maybe it's no big deal, happens all the time. So I reached out to a local attorney to check if the state bar does this regularly. His answer, no, it is not common. I'd like you to please note that date as well, September 6th, 2021. So this is the very same year that he is advising all of you on the city council concerning Trilogy, and just two and a half months later is when the incident in the city of Ferris happens, and this incident needs to be re-adressed. I'm referencing Mr. Holla's manslaughter charges that have been brought up in these meetings before, but this time in my research, I was able to find actual information on what happened the night of that crash, and I am submitting it to the council, along with maps of the location. Unlike the picture painted by Trilogy's attorney, Misty Ventura, in that meeting where she defended Holla and said this was a terrible accident, I found out that Holla was driving 93 miles per hour in a 45 mile per hour zone. On top of that, this happened at an intersection directly between an elementary school and a neighborhood development. The family had been playing at the basketball courts of the elementary school and was walking to their home across the street when the father and son were hit. I don't know about you, but driving 93 in a 45 does not sound like an accident to me, it sounds like negligence. On top of that, he was on his way to a city council meeting, and it turns out the individuals he struck were citizens from the very town Mr. Holla represented, the town of Ferris. It took 14 months for charges to be filed, but ultimately, in January of this year, the investigation found that Holla was operating the vehicle, quote, recklessly, and he has been charged with two counts of manslaughter. I find that word recklessly unsettlingly appropriate, because it's what he's done here in the city of McLendon-Chisholm by advising the city council that anyone can go back into executive session if they've been invited to help the decision-making process. As we saw in the hearing last week, this advice has opened the city to ongoing litigation over Toma violations. And make no mistake that these are serious. Now I want to address the comments he made during the hearing last week, as some of you were absent for that. In that hearing, Mr. Holla argued that a city doesn't have to follow its comprehensive plan. So instead of defending the one document in your city that includes a survey directly from your residents about what they want most for their city, he tried to argue that it's not required, and it took the city of Heath's attorneys to make it clear that while a city is not required to have a comp plan, if you do, it is law, and you're required to follow it as such. And then, when questioned over the Trilogy development, Mr. Holla argued repeatedly that none of MC's residents showed up to the meetings, as if to make it seem like they didn't come out because they were in favor of it. We all know why no one came out, because when you were elected mayor, Short, for reelection, you said, "We will make sure future growth is supported by the infrastructure required to maintain our high-quality, low-density rural environment." The people who voted for you believed you were going to make good on that promise, and that's why they didn't have to show up to every city council meeting, like we're doing now, to police that. All of this is to say, it is far past the time to turn this ship around. Stop digging the hole even deeper by continuing to get legal advice from an attorney who killed two citizens in a city he worked for by driving 93 miles per hour in a 45 zone, and on top of that, argued in court last week against your own city's comp plan. Your citizens are watching now. I personally, truly believe, all of you were just misled by an attorney who was making poor choices in his own life and unable to provide proper legal counsel on this development. Because I've seen the re-engagement from many of you, the deeper questioning of your city administrator and attorney, and not just taking their word on things, and I truly believe there are brilliant and dedicated individuals on this council. Please vote to not annex Trilogy's land.
Sarah Lyons, one Westchester Court, Heath. So, I know we've all stood up here, I've been up here a few times, and many of us here have been up here several times. Spouted off the same things over and over again, which make a lot of sense, facts, statistics to not approve this. So I'm going to just try a different approach and do common sense. Common sense. Common sense says a city that doesn't have the resources to support its current citizens has no business entering into an agreement and approving an agreement that is going to more than double the amount of people. It's common sense. Like, right? So, common sense says a city that does not have water supply should not add to its population at all, first of all, but 4,000, 5,000 people, common sense. Common sense says anybody, any city, that does not have the right road structure, you have, you have a two-lane road, two-lane, super windy, looking down, really shouldn't add to its population. Without a plan in place of what you're going to do, I'm sure Huffines has a great plan on it. How to change the road? No, you know, okay. Just the house isn't going to evolve. Okay. So, not only is it in need of repair, it's not, it's not adequate. And also, I have a personal friend who does go into these little cities that have had the same thing happen to them because of lack of people speaking up and lack of a mayor who stands up for them like our mayor in Heath. We don't have to go attend city council meetings, because he does it. Like, I've been to like four or five of McLendon-Chisholms. I don't live here, I live in Heath, but I'm going to protect our city. So, when these roads come in, even if you did repair these roads before, these trucks that are in and out day after day, 25 million times a day, back and forth, back and forth, bringing very heavy loads, ruins the roads. This personal friend of mine says, they don't even think about that whenever they're starting these things. You don't even plan for that. You don't. You don't. Because you don't think about it. I wouldn't. He told me that, and I was like, oh, wow. And these are small cities, right? So, common sense. It really is. Like, if nothing else, it's common sense. And I think you guys are all smart people, right? Now, one thing I want to say is that Huffines, when they looked into this, they probably looked, I don't know what goes into, like, the planning and the development, you're gonna go in, you're like, I'm gonna buy this land, and we're gonna build this grand master thing. And I will say, I looked online, I hadn't looked at before. They're beautiful, beautiful developments. It's not for us. It's just not for us. That many houses is not for us. It's not part of the plan. I think you would know, because that's what you were elected on, you were re-elected. Like, when I Googled it, Googled your name, that was what, like, didn't even have to click on a link, it said, "He Short." Like, re-elected on, or your platform was keeping the city rural, low density. This is not low density. Like, it's not. So, sorry, I lost my train of thought. My mind moves, it goes really fast. That's fine. Common sense, yeah. I don't always have that either. But, anyway, so they weren't thinking about the city of Heath. They were thinking about the city of McLendon Chisholm. You should have been looking at the city of Heath. We are well-developed, we are well-run, this is a new, it's not a new city, but we are well-versed in companies coming in and thinking they can take advantage, and they can't. You should have researched the city of Heath, because we will not let this happen, we will fight it to the death, and whatever happens, we will go into all these other little cities if this passes. What you could do, right now, I know you're losing money, you got attorneys, you got land sitting there with nothing being done, you're gonna find water and drill for water, maybe the city of McLendon Chisholm apparently is going to possibly go in on the water business, right? Maybe he can find water, he said that last week, he said, "Let's get it done in committee." I don't know about that. Maybe you already have, maybe that's what this is all about, I don't know. Maybe that's what, how this got a pass, but, either way, it's not gonna happen, but you could compromise. It would make it so much easier. If you look around, if you drive around, I don't know if you've driven around, custom houses, there are many custom builders that live here. We have custom houses. One acre lots. That's what we want. Like, we are not trying to fight you, you're in a business. You are, you're in a business, you're there to make money, you have made a ton of it. We all know that, we know the money.
Ma'am, you're at your time limit.
I know.
Thank you. Robert, are you wanting to speak during citizen comments or during public hearing? You're last on the citizens' comments, then.
Very good, good evening. Robert Steinhagen, 304 Pheasant Hill Drive. Well, the court has ruled that a city cannot sue another city, I'm sure you're all aware of that. But what we found from that court hearing was that what I had accused the city of doing is absolutely true. In a deposition testimony by Councilmember Westner and Member Tucker and the city secretary, they acknowledged, in fact, Texas Open Meetings Act had been violated by allowing Mr. Huffines and Mr. Cooney behind closed doors in an executive session. We've since found that, and so that alone gives a basis for a violation of Toma and a reason to void the development agreement. In addition to that, the other Toma violations are multiple. For instance, people love to talk about how you had public hearings for the development agreement, but when you look at the notice, the public notice on the website, when you compare that public notice to the other public notices that have been posted, it was anemic at best. The city violated the Texas Open Meetings Act by not posting necessary information so that citizens could come out and speak against the development agreement. Mr. Hildebrandt, the city administrator, acknowledged on video that the city council can allow anyone to go into executive session if the council calls them in. However, that's simply not true. In fact, case law establishes that only members of the city council have a right to attend an executive session. A governmental body cannot allow into executive session a person, a person whose presence is contrary to the governmental interest, and a governmental body has no authority to admit members of the public into executive session. To allow, now, Mr. Cooney is a former mayor of Heath, so he knows Toma. Each one of you know Toma. You have 90 days after you are in office to take Toma training. You know what the law is, and you know that you cannot do that. The city attorney apparently didn't know this, and advised you that you could violate state law. This is a problem for the city, because on a number of accounts, this is the basis for the citizens to stand up and say, "This development agreement violates Texas state law." Also, another violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act was that 13 properties did not receive notice about this development agreement. The development agreement violates the McLendon Chisholm 2015 and 2021 comprehensive plan, lot size reduced. Now, what's interesting about the development agreement, which I'll talk about during the hearing, is that it requires the city to annex this property. So to say that, well, we were, if anyone were to say that you complied with your comprehensive plan because, when you signed it, all of the property that was inside of the city of McLendon Chisholm was going to be one acre and is going to comply with that, even though you have no choice but to annex that 575 acres, which will be small lots, to say that you adhered to and that you followed the comprehensive plan is a lie. Now, a lawyer might say, "Well, that's the law." But the spirit of the law is what is being violated, and the trust of the citizens of McLendon Chisholm are also being violated. So I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, that you signed, along with all of the other mayors, to get rid of muds, to stop muds. That took great courage, and I thank you for doing that, and I hope the city council will follow in turn.
All right, the time is 7:07, citizens' comments are closed for the evening. We'll move on to Item 7, Consent Agenda, it's Items 7-1 through 7-9. Is there any item on there that a council member needs removed for any reason?
I would like to address 7.9.
Okay.
Looks like page...
Okay. Need a motion to remove that one?
Yes, I would like to remove 7.9.
A motion to remove 7.9 from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. There's not any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Show that unanimous. Okay. With the, can I go ahead and approve the rest of them first? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, Items 7-1 through 7-8?
I'll make a motion to consider acceptance of 7-1 through 7-8.
Okay, I've got a motion for the consent agenda, 7-1 through 7-8. Do I have a second? Here, let me...
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. On page 63, I like the way the page 63 is for the city of Rockwall, and all it needs is the City of Rockwall letter and the North Texas Municipal Water Department. They both need, there's two letters on page 63 that just needs the McLendon Chisholm letterhead, the date, and then it needs Conrad's city signature, and then the same thing on the North Texas Municipal Water Department, same thing, what are the McLendon Chisholm letterhead, date, and his signature. No mojo, please. And then on pages 64 and 65, just completely delete those two pages, just, we don't need those pages. Those are the original ones that you first set up, that I asked you to delete and replace with the ones that I sent you.
Mayor, this was originally a city council agenda item, and so that's why the original letters are included. Councilmember Westner did ask me to do that, but with interaction with our city attorney, it was determined that we should bring it back for the full council to approve those new letters that were written, since they were substantially different than the letters that they saw. And so that's why it went that way, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. All right, well, I'll need a motion for what you're asking.
Okay, I need a, I'd like to make a motion to delete pages 64 and 65 and replace those with page 63. There are two letters, if you will look, there are two letters on 63 to, one of them is to the city of Rockwall, and there is a letter to the North Texas Municipal Water Both of those will need our letterhead, our McLendon Chisholm letterhead with a date, today's date, preferably, Conrad's signature with our, his, I don't know how he does it, I guess, his city administrator, and then just send those out, please, in replacement.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, now it's open for discussion, council. Anybody have anything on that? All right, if not, Dan, do you have? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, show one opposed and the rest in favor. Dan. All right. We've now completed that one. Moving on to Item 8.1, public hearing to consider annexation, or, excuse me, annexing the following two tracts of land into the city of McLendon Chisholm pursuant to the request of the property owner, MC Trilogy LLC, and approximately 441.818 acre tract of land and an approximately 133.315 acre tract of land generally located north of 550 and east and west of Pullen Road, situated in the J. Simmons Survey, abstract number 202, the WW Ford Survey, number 80, and the A. Rodriguez Survey, abstract number 231 in Rockwall County, Texas, identified by county ID numbers 115324 and 115325, and also being a portion of the property described in a deed to Hodges Ranch Partners Limited as reported in volume 3828, page 322, as document number 00319510 in the official public records of Rockwall County, Texas. Just so everybody knows, there will not be a vote on this public hearing. But the time is 7:14, public hearing is now open. Misty, I think you reserve to talk during the public hearing.
Mayor, Councilmember Misty Ventura, 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218, on behalf of the property owner, MC Trilogy. As we are all aware, the MC Trilogy project is subject to an ETJ development agreement. That ETJ development agreement required the property owner to submit a petition for voluntary annexation. That petition for voluntary annexation was submitted on December 5th, 2022. On January 24th, 2023, there was an annexation public hearing and an acceptance of that petition consistent with the terms of the ETJ development agreement. I would remind the community that the ETJ is unlike the city limits, there is no comprehensive plan that governs the ETJ, and as a result, this property owner, MC Trilogy, and this community negotiated for almost two years to find a win-win solution for the community and the property owner that benefited citizens of McLendon Chisholm and benefited the community and Rockwall County as a whole. And it did that by requiring this developer to fund infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, and drainage for the benefit of the community at no cost to the citizens. In addition to that, the ETJ development agreement included terms that helped solve water concerns for the community. And last, but certainly not least, it restricted the ETJ property to prohibit uses, like multifamily uses, that were not desirable in the community. And those compromises resulted in that petition for annexation. We respect and appreciate the compromises that were made, and we look forward to continuing to work with the community on a master-planned community that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Black?
Mr. Mayor, do you want this still under the five-minute rule?
Yes, please. Michael, on the public hearing?
But it's still a one-way communication.
Yes. Michael? That is correct, right?
The whole thing on the agenda says it's a public comment, a public hearing, a public comment, is the point for the public, to tell the council what they want, what they're thinking, what their thoughts are, what they're opinion on about the item that's posted on the agenda. You're talking about something that wasn't on the agenda, it would make zero sense to even bother to post, just say, "Public hearing," about whatever. So you would be limited to just the item that's on the agenda. And it's not, it doesn't say discussion, it's not discussion, interaction, it is public hearing for the citizens or whoever, whether they're not citizens, doesn't matter, anybody can come up and say whatever they want to council about that posted agenda.
Mayor, then this is also consistent with every single city in town in the state of Texas, or pick your state in the United States.
So the, folks, I can, I'm only gonna address the person at the podium because he asked a legitimate question, okay? And Mr. Black, in all fairness to you, you can describe or explain what your frustrations are during the public hearing with this particular item, but no, we cannot interact with you.
All righty. Not part of my prepared remarks, but the Huffines lady said, "For virtually no cost to the citizens." So money is what they think, not the way we like to live, a rural feel, which is in our comprehensive plan. So there is a call...
So there is a cost to the community. It's over traffic, it's pollution, it's all kinds of things. So that's irrelevant to any negotiations, and it shouldn't have been part of them, because that's just, anyway. Okay, the comprehensive plan, everyone knows, but just to make sure they, they know the detail, it, it was approved and signed in September twenty-one, and it set one acre, you know, the minimum size for residential, single-family lots would be one acre with a minimum width of a hundred and fifty feet. What we got in the compromise from Trilogy is point, or zero point one four acres with a fifty-foot width. And in fact, ninety-one percent of the total are under a quarter acre. That's hardly a rural feel. Now, I know it's in ETJ, and the builder should be able to, or the developer is going to split the lots up the way they want. So this was an early plan, maybe a miracle occur, and they'll switch them all to one acre lots. Somehow, the no cost to the citizens mentality is probably going to say they can't do that. So the comprehensive plan was approved September twenty-one, but the development agreement for Trilogy was signed one month later. And so that does really beg the question, if we had just approved something that made it very clear what the citizens wanted, you know, fifty-three percent, or I mean, the majority of the citizens wanted the lot size that we specified in the comprehensive plan. I mean, the city spent money on the comprehensive plan. You hired a consulting firm to help us go through it and educate us, the water and the sewer and the residential and everything. So one month later, you signed a plan that sort of ignored all that. Now, at the planning and zoning meeting, someone brought up, "how can you do a zoning when it's in ETJ?" And I guess that means the city can't do that, they have to be in the city limits. So the extra, what is it, extra territorial jurisdiction in ETJ. The way it was explained, as I understood it, was, "well, we do the annexation, and we do the zoning sort of like simultaneous." Which means it's sort of, if you're worried about the comprehensive plan, it's not, the, the zoning is really not there yet, and then you annex it, now it's there, so it's okay to have the little lots. I don't understand the logic, but that's what the guy was trying to explain, I think. So we're representative government, but in the space of about thirty days, we didn't get represented very well in that agreement. Four of the six members are here that were there during that agreement, or during the comprehensive plan, in the agreement. Sorry that that probably means that some of all of you four that are up there voted for it or agreed with it. Maybe not, but a majority, I guess. Well, there's an election, you're representative of government, so we can vote them out. Oh, there's only one contested election this time. Some of you guys are going away, and new people are coming in uncontested. There's only one person who has a contested election. So everyone needs to vote on Saturday, May sixth.
Thank you, Mr. Black. All right, Robert?
Well, I hold in my hand the development agreement, and this development agreement establishes that the city shall annex. So it really kind of begs the question, why do we have a public hearing? What's the purpose of the public hearing regarding the annexation? Well, it's statutory, right? It's, it's a rhetorical question, I'm not, not actually asking you a question. It's, it's statutory, the state law requires it. Why, why does the state law require it? Well, because state law assumes, state law makes it clear that you're not, you haven't made a decision yet. That's why you have a public hearing. But this says you've already made a decision. This gives the developer standing to sue the city if you say no to annexation. How is this legal? How is it possible that the decision has already been made, and yet we're holding a public hearing? It's only possible because you, it's a violation of, again, state law. This development agreement is fraught with problems, not just problems to the community. I find it interesting, Ms. Ventura spoke and made it very clear, what's in the ETJ is not bound by the comprehensive plan. She's right. That's absolutely right under the law. The problem is, when you sign this agreement, you signed it with the, with the understanding that that in the ETJ is going to be part of the city. So it should then, naturally, the spirit of, of the law should, should prevail, but it doesn't, or Ms. Ventura doesn't want it to. And so here's the thing, and what I'm asking the city council, and I think what the citizens are asking the city council, is when are you going to stand up for the people? You've been misled by a, by a, an attorney who is, who has violated his oath. He's, he is, he's guilty of malpractice, no question. And that is the standing that the city has to say, "we are, this, this development agreement is null and void." I continue to assert that this city would be well-served to hire an attorney who actually practices in real estate law. That's all. Mr. Hala does not practice in real estate law. Again, when I was mayor, we hired a board, a, a, an attorney who was board-certified in real estate law. Why? Because he was our advocate, he was working on our behalf and the citizens' behalf, not on behalf of the, of the developer. As further evidence of the malpractice, legal malpractice that is, that has been perpetrated against the city, remember when you guys were, had the opportunity to ask questions and to deal with, with the concerns that you had in the development agreement, who was it that you, that stood before you and answered your questions? Was it your city attorney? Was it a board-certified real estate lawyer that the city had hired? No, it was Misty Ventura. It was Misty Ventura, who is the, who is an advocate for the developer, who has a conflict of interest and should never have been advising this council. Still have a minute, but I'll, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you, guys. I know this is, what you're doing, I, I believe that many of you had the best interests of the people at, and at heart, but I believe that you were misled and deceived by, by an attorney who had no business advising you. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Have we got any more forms on public hearing? Yes, ma'am. He needs to fill out a sheet because I've got to have the documentation for the city secretary. Yeah, you can come back up under, under that. Let her, whoever was wanting to speak, but yes, you will still have the opportunity. I want it for her for documentation on the individual speaking. Okay, Philip, can you just give us a minute?
Yes, Mayor, Philip Huffines, I live at thirty-nine.
Philip, let him finish what he was wanting to speak first, and then we'll get you up there, okay? The other guy that, that's wanting to speak, let him finish what he wanted to say.
Okay, good. Is that back on? There you go. Okay, good, thanks. Glad we have some more time here. There's just a lot to go over, and even still, I'm not sure if there is enough time. Bottom line here, we're getting to the nitty-gritty, it boils down to trust, and are you our advocate for us or not, and who's our advocate over here, or are you not, or were you misled? I'm just trying to find out and get to the bottom of this. And as I mentioned, I did just a very small search on Google, and if you just look at Mr. Hildebrand's employment history, as I was mentioning, mentioning in 2012, this was as long as tenure.
John, John, under the advisement of the city attorney, it's got to be about the annexation. Because the public hearing is about the annexation, not-
This is all regarding, this is all regarding the annexation and how you're being led, what is not.
Anybody would put, hey, let's put agenda item and then not go by it. So I don't, I don't know why you would do that. So you got an agenda item here about the annexation. That's what, that's what-
Mr. Hala, why would somebody go ninety-three miles an hour in a forty-five mile an hour zone? Tell us that. Folks, tell us that. Everybody stop right now, okay? We're all adults here, one at a time. If everybody wants to get out of hand and see if they can talk louder, I guarantee you, I can get loud. I don't want to do that, I don't think you want to do that. Let's show respect for each other. Let the person say what they're saying, then you can have your opportunity to speak if you don't like what he's saying, okay? But we're not going to sit here and try and talk all over each other. That is unprofessional, and you're better than that. So let's start showing it. Mr. Hala?
No, just, again, my job is to give you advice, my job is not to tell you what to do. My job is to warn you that this item, it's posted for the public hearing for the annexation. That's what the comments must be limited to. Whether y'all decide to let someone speak or not speak on something, how much you let them speak, that's your decision. I'm just here to give you the heads up that that's what it's got to be.
Sir, you can, you can voice your opinion as you think based on, and I'm not trying to tell you how to speak, but if, if you're upset about the developer's agreement, if you want to say, "based on that," or whatever, however you want to term it, you don't think the annexation is proper, I get it, okay? So I'll leave you to finish what you're saying. Has my time started over since I was interrupted, or where are we at?
Did you stop the timer? How much time does he have left? You've got three minutes. She stopped it when y'all started talking.
Okay, doesn't seem quite fair, but regardless, what I'm getting at here to talk to the point is there's five solid issues that should cause a complete pause on this Trilogy and Trinity project. If Mr. Hildebrand can't be trusted, then we don't have a long, and if Mr. Hildebrand does not have a long-term time horizon, as he was just applying for a job in Greenville, Arizona in December during all this was going on, we have an issue, because is he advising you, which is his job, Mr. Mayor, is he, is he advising you correctly? So if we have a communication problem, as I said to begin with, is there's something that's broken, and I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, I don't know whether it's misled, I don't know if it's intentional or not, but there's five issues that I have on Mr. Brand alone that says, "this guy can't be trusted." And that's your hire, that's all your hire, and what have you done about the background check? Because a guy that's missing spaces by two to three years in between employment is not a guy that I'd be hiring, nor an attorney that is causing issues, not trained in the real estate law and has legal issues of his own. So, Mr. Mayor, I know that you signed an agreement with Rockwall that there will be no muds, so I'm going to ask you, will you live up to your word? Will you represent us? Will you be our advocate? Because that's why we are showing up now, because there is a failure in this system. We should not have to take our times out. We elected you, we want you to be our advocate and live to what you promised when you started your election, and we're re-elected. So ultimately, you're the CEO, and if the city, of the city, and if it falls, excuse me, it falls on you to make these decisions, and I would advise to stop this project before it gets worse from a legal standpoint, costing the city not only fees, but then cause all the other damages that we're talking about regarding infrastructures, schools, we don't have water, all that, please take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Huffines?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, city council. My name is Philip Huffines, I live at thirty-nine hundred Miramar, Dallas, Texas. And I think that the community at large, especially here in this room, are not really aware of the amount of compromise and negotiations we've had for the last two years with the city. As it was pointed out, five hundred-plus acres is in the ETJ. And what we know is that the comprehensive plan doesn't apply to the ETJ, land use does not apply to the ETJ, and we, as, as owners of that property, are free to develop the property in any manner we desire. And when we came to the city and talked to them, we were requesting over three thousand units to be developed there, apartments, townhomes, build-to-rent, forty-foot lots, twenty-foot townhomes, et cetera, because those are the most profitable and, and we think would be the best thing for the property. The city, the council at the time, as you guys know, said, "no, we're not going to tolerate any of that." And so we went back and forth, and now the density's cut in half. We did away with all of the apartments, we did away with the townhomes, we did away with the build-to-rent, we did away with the forty-foot lots, and we're going to build a fabulous community, the best community that Rockwall has ever seen. We took it upscale, much more than we anticipated. We're not, we're not having D.R. Horton and other builders come into this community. This community is going to be spectacular. But I can assure you that if for any reason that the city doesn't honor their agreement that we spent so much time on, then we, and we are stay in the ETJ, we will build apartments. We may even build mobile home parks, because that is the most profitable solution to us. So I just want to make that-
Folks, show respect. Show respect, I asked everybody to do that.
And I, I think-
Can't show respect, I'm going to ask you to leave.
I just think that the community at large isn't aware that that is a possibility and one that we are seriously considering. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
A developer that comes in and at the end of a public hearing threatens us with mobile homes shows me who Philip Huffines really is.
Keep it?
No. Let me just make clear.
You have to keep it about the annexation, or you cannot speak.
I am going to talk about the annexation. To act like this city could have done nothing is a lie, because Huffines was in conversations with the City of Heath as well. And what did the City of Heath do? They didn't play ball. And what did Huffines do? He sued them. So to act like somehow you guys could have done nothing is not true. I ask, when it comes to this annexation, that you guys get better representation. That gentleman was here to provide you vital information about your city administrator that shows that you have someone who's searching for a new job. He's looking for new jobs in December, we are going through this, and your city administrator is looking for a new job. It is not time to annex this land, it's time to figure out ways to slow this down and figure out what we're doing in the city.
Shelley, we don't have any more? Okay. It is seven thirty-nine, public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed. We'll move on to the next item. 9.1 shows an executive session, but we don't have an agenda item that's associated with that. Oh, 9.1? Okay. Okay. Well, it is, it is 7:39. We will recess into executive session. Just want to make sure it was right.
All right, the time is eight eighteen. We're back from executive session. There was no action in executive session. Um, we'll move on to item ten, updates, discussion of direction to staff. Um, updates. Please don't forget that this Saturday, I believe it starts at nine, is the second annual McLennan-Chisholm egg drop. I know that sounds kind of funny. It's an Easter egg deal, but when we say egg drop, there's going to be a really cool helicopter that shows up and he's going to drop eggs and I'm going to warn you as adults, if you bring small children here and they see eggs, get out of the way because they will run you over trying to find those eggs. So, but we're going to have that on Saturday. Uh, if you weren't here last year, yes, last year was our first one. We didn't know what to expect. Um, and it was overwhelming the amount of community response of people that showed up and it was really cool. There was a lot of fun things for everybody to do. Um, we expect it to be as big, if not bigger this year and after seeing what we did last year, they're going to do a lot to improve on it from last-
All right. The time is eight eighteen. We're back from executive session. There was no action in executive session. We'll move on to item ten, updates, discussion and direction to staff. Updates, please don't forget that this Saturday, I believe it starts at nine, is the second annual McLendon-Chisholm egg drop. I know that sounds kind of funny. It's an Easter egg deal, but when we say egg drop, there's going to be a really cool helicopter that shows up, and he's going to drop eggs, and I'm going to warn you as adults, if you bring small children here and they see eggs, get out of the way because they will run you over trying to find those eggs. So, but we're going to have that on Saturday. If you weren't here last year, yes, last year was our first one. We didn't know what to expect. And it was overwhelming, the amount of community response of people that showed up, and it was really cool. There was a lot of fun things for everybody to do. We expect it to be as big, if not bigger, this year, and after seeing what we did last year, they're going to do a lot to improve on it from last year. So, I'm looking forward to seeing exactly how it pans out for Saturday. On top of that, if you know our code enforcement guy, Mark Woodruff, this last Saturday, he was able to utilize folks from the Rockwall County Jail, and they were out here along five fifty doing a cleanup, and cleaning up trash in the ditches along the roads and things like that, and that, that's a huge thing. My hat's off to him for being able to use that initiative to get folks there to come do that. Also, he has a spring cleanup coming up, I believe it is, I was going to say February, April twenty-second. So, no spring cleanups coming. If you've got stuff you just need to get rid of and your trash company don't want to pick it up, I mean, let's, let's see what we can do. Other than that, we'll move on to item eleven, sorry, council member reports announcements. I don't have anything other than what I just said. Trudy? Lorna? Floyd? Brian? Okay. Did you have anything from Roads Consortium or Dan?
That was my first meeting at the Roads Consortium after having taken over from Lorna Kipitz's position, and it's, it's a large group of folks that are there to discuss roads and what's going on in the county. And obviously, the ones that concern us are South two oh five and the five forty-eight down south, even more so. And so, a lot of delays. It, it works at a glacial pace, to say the least.
All right. Well, seeing that we've met everything on the agenda, it is now eight twenty-one. Tonight's meeting is adjourned. Oh, absolutely. Four? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I just saw the video on it, so, okay, yeah.